Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 10th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our leadership of Lorraine County thought for today is work hard, play straight, understand the game, and make good decisions. Madam Clerk?
At 10:00 AM, Dennis Lamont will make a presentation on the Heritage Trial Line, under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Are those the ones with the pink sheets?
Correct.
There's two. Can I have those, please? Thank you. I'd like to hold 504-05 and also 530-05 until I get some more explanation on those two issues.
530-05.
Okay. Thank you. Also move for approval, with the exception of those two.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Personnel issues?
Commissioners will need an executive session at the conclusion of a regular board meeting. They have an issue of new hire, issue of collective bargaining, potential purchase of real estate, pending legal matter, all which are allowable under the Sunshine Law.
We want to go to lunch today.
We'll bring you a cup of soup.
Thanks.
Wow.
Number 10.
You don't get me.
I guess.
Approve an entrance in agreement with RWL Architects, Inc., Elaria, to perform architectural services for the renovations and alterations to Lorraine County Administration Building, portions of the 4th and 5th floors. Cost will be $136,815, or 6.5% of the construction cost, plus reimbursable not to exceed $7,000. These funds are available from account 00101-2001-450124, capital expenditures, professional services.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Certified approval to Eaton Northwestern Professional Business Joint Economic Development District pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Sections 15.76 through 7.7, sorry.
Jerry Ennis, do you have comments for us?
Commissioners, this is the final step in the approval of a JED district. This is one out of Eaton Township that involves some property divorced. Your role at this point is to make sure that all the appropriate documents have been prepared and submitted according to law, and I would indicate to the Commissioners that I have gone through the packets to assure that those have been done. Other than that, unless you feel that there was some fraud or something in securing the signature of these agreements, then the Commissioners are to ratify the agreement.
Do you have any questions for Jerry? I believe this is first JED for Eaton Township.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Also move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Receive and journalize an annexation petition for approximately 155.289 acres of land from Township of Wellington to the village in accordance with Ohio Revice Code 709.16. Stephen Bond is the agent for petitioners.
And do you have comments on this, Jerry?
This is just the initial step in receiving this, and we have to generalize it.
I believe this is just for the first parcel, Teresa?
This is, correct.
This is the annexation that we rejected.
For the reservoir.
It was for four parcels, and now they've come back and they're asking for annexation of the first parcel.
Correct. And within 30 to 45 days, they have to come up with an agreement and the other kind of paperwork, and then we will go into another thing.
This is a little different than the other one. This is done on expedited annexation of property that is completely owned by the village.
Right. Okay. Also move for approval.
And I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Certified the approval of Amherst Township in the City of Lorraine Economic Development District under Ohio Revice Code 715.77.
Jim, did you want to comment on this?
Well, I don't have too much to say, Commissioner. It's been a long road. Mr. Ennis has been out there with the trustees, and I've worked with the city on this, and I'm glad that we were able to come to some agreeable solution. Right now, we're working on quite a development project out there, and the positive news Tuesday night, which directly relates to this JED, is that Amherst Township has pledged a good amount of their portion of the income tax towards developing the property with regards to needing infrastructure improvements, specifically the sewer service out there. I understand that the City Council in Lorraine has called a special meeting tonight to do a second reading on doing the very same thing that was the first reading Monday night, and there'll be a special meeting tonight and a special meeting Monday, so I'm fairly comfortable that the City of Lorraine is going to come to the table in a big way, too, and pledge quite a bit of the income that they're going to receive in addition to working on a TIF out there and the county pledging sales tax. Looks like we're going to get a nice project. I don't want to talk too more specifically about that right now because we're waiting to hear from the developer, and I will be, there's a couple of issues that relate to some potential litigation that we need to talk about, too. But I'm very, very encouraged in the cooperative spirit, and especially Tuesday night, my hat off to the Amherst Township trustees for, they moved a lot, and they didn't want to, but for the betterment of the community, the betterment of this project, and I will say the same thing next week about the City of Lorraine when they finish. So I encourage you to support this JED, and the rest of it will be coming to you in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Jim. Jerry, do you have anything further to add?
Just again, this is similar, and I would represent to the Commissioners that I have reviewed the documents and can assure you that all the necessary documents according to law are in file, and again, whether you consider whether this has been for any unlawful fraud or something in the inducement in bringing this about.
Also move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Approve an entrance agreement with Barbara &amp; Hoffman, Inc., Cleveland, to perform engine engineering services for, and this should be 2005 continuing repair program for Lorraine County parking garage. Cost is $32,500, plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $1,300, to be paid from account 00101-2001-450124, capital expenditures, professional services.
I believe the estimated cost is $300,000.
Yes, and if I may for a moment, for the benefit of our two newer Commissioners, you notice we said "the ongoing" project. We spent about $300,000 last year, and I'm afraid to say that we're probably going to have to spend that for about the next two or three, four years, every year, working on these expansion joints. We simply can't close the garage for a long enough period of time to do the joints all at one time, plus the cost effectiveness of trying to do so in one year is going to be pretty insurmountable. I don't want to mislead you, we've had some dialogue in this hearing room before over these expansion joints, so when you see one next year and the year after, and, you know, God willing, we're still all together then, I don't want you to be saying, "I thought we fixed this last year." We have a lot of expansion joints, we have a 35-year-old garage, we're going to have to have an ongoing maintenance program for those expansion joints in addition to the structural issues in the garage. So I'm not going to say too much more, except that you're going to be seeing these again, so hopefully you can please put it back there when I come back next time.
I'll also say that this is one reason why I'm in favor of surface parking as opposed to parking decks, because they're costly to maintain. I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, approve various reimbursements for projects done through Lorraine County Community Department, one City of Avon for the ADA elevator project and the City Senior, excuse me, City Senior Citizen Center, in the amount of $30,000 for CDBG fiscal year 2004, to be paid from account 12604-2501-450404, and the City of Oberlin for acquisition expenses, which purchased a lot off of Pleasant Street, parcel 0900096110024, and the amount of $20,000 for CDBG fiscal 2003, to be paid from account
Also move.
Second.
Discussion.
These are grant money, correct? This isn't, nothing coming out of the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Approve various contracts to provide emergency home repair assistance, which includes one KMU Trucking and Excavating Avon in the amount of $2,640 to GNEM Elhart, 660 Tenny Avenue, Amherst Township, to install a new water line. Three bids were received on February 9th, this being the most responsive bid complying with specifications. This amount includes a 10% contingency of $240 to be paid from CDBG fiscal 2004 account 12604-2501-450422, and Akilby Enterprises, Inc., North Ridgeville, in the amount of $8,360 to Dave L. and Virginia L. Taylor at 12372 Island Road Graft, and for a new roof. Two bids were received on March 2nd, this being the most responsive bid complying with specifications, and this amount also includes 10% contingency of $760 to be paid from CDBG fiscal 2003 account 12603-2501-450422.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve and enter into a legal services agreement between Eastman &amp; Smith, Limited, Toledo, Ohio, containing a 30-day cancellation clause to be paid from account 20201-5302-450124, professional services. They will provide services to the district, including specifically representation of the district's implementation and development of the district's solid waste management plan, and proposed legislation or rules affecting the implementation and development of the plan, but not limited to the authority of the Board pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Chapters 343 and 3734.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under Transit, approve and enter into a three-year contract effective April 1st, 2005, with two one-year renewal options with MV Contract Transportation, Inc., Fairfield, California. This contract will provide drivers, scheduling, dispatching, maintenance, and administration for Lorraine County Transit. This has been recommended by the General Manager of Lorraine County Transit and RLS &amp; Associates.
Do you have comments, Mr. Cordez?
I can always have comments, Commissioners. One of the issues during the transfer of Transit was the aging service contract. There had been several renewals, and the original contract had been negotiated, I want to say back in '95 or '96. It was a pretty aged contract. So we set about doing RFP last fall. It's an extensive RFP, and a long evaluation. There was several people that bided to gain the contract, and it was reviewed by our consultants and our people over Transit. If the MV contract proves to work as well as we believe it will be, we'll actually end up saving about $170,000 over the life of the contract than what we're currently paying today. So not only are we achieving economics into the future over the other proposals, but we're actually going to decrease current costs, and that's something we're looking at. And given the price of fuel and everything else going up, that's quite an aggressive approach to trying to manage Transit, but we're counting the pennies and nickels every day with Transit. Leaving an incumbent that's been there for several years and moving to a new company is a very trying experience, and we have a lot of hurdles to overcome making that transition. Once the Board makes their legislative move here, and I encourage you to support this, we have a lot of things we need to do to make that a seamless transition to the riders out there, and we have a short period of time to do that, but I'm comfortable that we're going to be able to do that, and this should be fairly seamless to the users of the service.
Do we have anything in our packet relating to this?
We should. Did you receive, did you have information? Mr. Ferguson's here, or should have been here.
I saw him come in. Pardon me? I got it after you walked in the board stuff.
She said I didn't have it last night. Would it be possible to hold this in abeyance until next week until I can look that over? Is there a problem with?
Well, it would be. The effect, well, no. Either way, whatever the pleasure of the Board, the effective date's 1 April, so the sooner we notify the parties, the sooner we can start working on the transition. But whatever the pleasure of the Board.
Tom, can we have some discussion on this, then? Maybe some comment on the changes?
Tom Ferguson, Director of Lorraine County Transit. Yes, Jim pretty much said it all. I mean, that was the process. We went through the RFPs, and we looked at it, and we analyzed costs, and just to inform the Board, cost was 20% of the criteria to evaluate. There's nine different areas of evaluation, and cost was 20% of it. So cost was a factor, but it's not necessarily been a total overriding factor that determined who we thought was the best, most responsive bidder. As Jim said, the plan is to start at April 1st. Responders all wanted at least about 30 days, so we're just a little bit short of getting them their starting time at this point. But, you know, we're flexible, we can do whatever the Board wishes.
I would just hate to see something held up in transition for a week that's going to slow down the process of the changeover and stuff. As I've looked through the packet, Betty, and then comments from Jim and Tom, they're the experts in this area.
If there's particular questions, maybe I could answer some of those, if there's anything in particular.
The way I understand it, this is a firm that's going to help us set up everything that we've got running from now on, and it's going to save us money long-term downstream, correct?
Correct, yes. They will take over the whole system, they are a big national company, headquartered out of California, but they're nationwide. They're about as big as First Transit is, and yeah, they've been through these things before, so they understand the transition, but you know, the shorter the timeframe is, the little bit more difficult it makes it, but not impossible.
I'd move for passage on it.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Excuse me? Two options. First, Elizabeth, before you speak, the gentleman behind you apparently has some comments he wants to make, and then I'll recognize you.
Thank you. Hello, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chris Goble, and I represent one of the companies that did submit an RFP, to the RFP, a proposal. We're a local company, Hopkins Airport Limousine Service and Lakefront Lines. We've been a business since 1962, we're the 12th largest independently-owned transportation system, family-owned transportation system in the country, and I wanted to, just to address a few things regarding the RFP and the pricing. As I said, we submitted a proposal, too. We also submitted a savings to the Transit Administration that over the first 19 months of the contract would have saved the county $400,000. Plus, we were also coming into this contract with a 10% DBE participation. We felt that that savings and the DBE participation would be a benefit to the Transit operation. We know my means as large as First Transit or MV Transportation, but we have done contracts. We are a large independently-owned operation. Everything we would have done here would have been locally. Any revenues that would have been generated would have stayed in the northeastern Ohio economy, as opposed to going back to California where this company's headquarters are. I just wanted to point a couple of these things out to the Commissioners and ask that they review this again, and I understand price isn't the only issue, but, you know, we feel as far as our company, we have the wherewithal, the ability to do this contract. We've been on different contracts throughout the country, like I said before, and we just asked that the, obviously, this price is definitely higher than ours if they're able to only save $170,000, and we're coming in with a $400,000 savings over the first two years of the contract. So we just, I just asked the Commissioners to do their due diligence and take the time to review this matter, and make sure it's in the best decision of the taxpayers of Lorraine County.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Ferguson, would you like to respond to that?
No problems with Hopkins, and they do. Most of their business is tour kind of business. They do do a lot of what they call paratransit, demand response kind of service. It's feeling of myself and the consultant that they're, they don't have a lot of fixed route experience, and in their RFP, they did not name, which was a main criteria, there's like 30% of it was naming the managers, both operational and maintenance managers. Mr. Goble here was named and put in there on a, I think it was about 30% basis, for 30 days, something like that, and that was a big part, so that we knew what kind of management would come in to this system. Also, subjectively, we felt there may be some financial, not weakness, but sometimes you have to be able to sustain maybe a slow payment from us, and we weren't sure if they could sustain some of that. And maintenance was a little bit of concern, they lost a little bit of points in maintenance. They did mention in their proposal that vehicle maintenance for this contract maybe subcontracted out, and we were a little worried about that, and whether they had totally the resources that at least the others, primarily MV and First Transit, they're biggest, they may not have all those resources that were required for this contract. So that was our rationale, not a bad company, but we just thought that the others were a little bit better, more responsive.
Jim, you want to comment further?
Well, I pass some information, similar information on to you with regards to proposal. I'm sure they're a great company, but given the importance and the size of our Transit here, and based upon the evaluation of, you know, a highly regarded consultant, we just weren't willing to go that deep into the pool and make that big risk. It was felt that they may not be able to perform, I'm sure this gentleman will say they can perform, and I would expect nothing other than somebody to support their company like that, but our evaluation is that the MV proposal, at this point, is a much better long-term outcome for the county and Transit than their proposal, and we stand firm on that.
Other questions? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Rummick, Overland, Ohio. My question had been, why a California group? This is after all, a vast company. There's been some discussion about that, a vast country, excuse me. There's been now some information further about that. I guess now my further question would be, what sort of local supervision will there be? Is this all going to be via computer, or just how will it be monitored, et cetera?
Elizabeth, a lot of these Transit companies, or national companies, what they do is they, they go in and they set up local offices, and they, excuse me, they gain these contracts and they establish a local presence. First Transit's not a local company either, and they've been the incumbent provider for a number of years, six or seven, I believe. So this has been the trend with Transit companies for quite a while. As far as what they do is they come in, they hire a local General Manager, they have, they hire the locals. I also understand, and I've had some dialogue, I'm encouraged that MV is going to be looking at the union workforce over there, their steelworkers at First Transit, and they are some kind of signatory with the steelworkers, so there'll be a smooth transition with the employees also. I did have a discussion with the labor people to make sure that we were going to continue to provide jobs, and I'm encouraged that that transition's also going to happen very smoothly. So they do hire local.
One question. Mr. Ferguson had mentioned that this company would be subcontracting the maintenance out. With this company that you're deciding to go with, Mr. Ferguson, since they're from California, will they also be subcontracting their maintenance out?
I don't believe so. They didn't say that. They do have all their own mechanics. If anything, sometimes some bodywork does get subcontracted out, depending on the extent of it.
Okay. And I didn't catch your name from...
My name is Chris Goble.
Union employees, non-union employees? With your company?
No, we said, we said that within our proposal that we would retain as many of the employees and work with them whatever way possible, as long as they met our hiring criteria. Every company has their own criteria. There shouldn't, for example, our insurance company limits sometimes an amount of points that a driver can have. You know, until I, we, our company would be involved and run that information on the various employees, and we couldn't guarantee that, but we would, within our proposal, we did state that we would retain as many of the current employees as possible. And as far as our size and our wherewithal, you know, we put references in there that they could have called to verify any of that, but, you know, we feel that we could have done the job. And as far as subcontracting the maintenance, that's not uncommon to do in contracts, and if you asked any of First Transit or MV Transportation if they do all their contracts and all their own maintenance and all their contracts, no, they subcontract out also. It depends what's best for the contract at that point in time.
Further questions, Commissioners?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
No.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
I have no further comments except for the executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant Attorney Prosecutor.
I have a few legal things to update the Commissioners on if we have time. I know you have a busy schedule this morning, so if we have time in the executive session, I'd like to address those.
Commissioners report.
No report.
Been a busy week, and I'd just like to thank Mr. Ennis and Mr. Cordez on the City of Lorraine and Amherst Township JED, and working through the administration, the township officials, and Council on the City of Lorraine. It looks like we're going to be able to make this project go, so I'd like to thank them for their participation.
Thank you. This morning, our Solid Waste Director, Dan Billman, has some representatives from the Lorraine City Schools who are the award winners for our paper recycling contest, and Dan will tell us about them.
Dan Billman, Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We have two people from the Elaria Schools, the principals, and Rich Nielsen, which is the business manager. We have Dr. Jack Diaby, he's the principal of Eliant Elementary and Spring Valley Early Childhood Center. We have Principal Robin Fisher. Windsor Elementary was unable to get here this morning. What we'd like to do is have the Commissioners come up and present certificates for the first, second, and third prizes. Eli Elementary had won the first prize, Spring Valley is the second prize, Windsor is the third. Eli got 14.2 tons, and Spring Valley got 12.1, and Windsor had... And Windsor had eleven point five. This is a contest that ran for four months and they did an excellent job. And we hope to continue these processes in the future. If you'd like to come up, Dr. Jack Diaby and Robin Fisher and Mr. Rich Nielsen. The first one, the first one will be Eli Elementary School. They won the, the top prize. So Commissioner, you can do the honors.
Are you Eli?
Yes, Commissioner. Thank you very much. The second prize goes to Spring Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third prize is for Windsor. Actually, the first prize is for two hundred and fifty dollars. Second prize is for a hundred and fifty dollars and the third prize is for a hundred. And I certainly thank everybody for the participation.
You know, Stan's keeping the envelopes. He likes, but he's got the money.
You know, I forgot, Commissioner. Thank you. That's what you're there for, to keep me in line, okay? Here's Eli. Thank you. Spring Valley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, it was an excellent program. And we, and we thank you again. Thank you, commissioners.
Second. Any further discussion on it? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
No, ten o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please. Dennis Lamott, Heritage Trolley Line.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't kidding.
Dennis Lamott from the Lorain Street Railway Incorporated is here. They were here a couple of weeks ago when we heard about the Heritage Home Loan Program and they asked to come back and show us what they would like to do in the city of Lorain in conjunction with the casino program, but I think that they would like to do it regardless. And I, it sounds exciting and the pictures that they have provided for us, well, just those of us who've been around long enough to remember what a streetcar is.
Lorain, I don't, aren't included.
I know you children don't know that.
Part of our audience participation is how many people in the room ever rode a streetcar? Have you did? I did. So you have some idea what we're talking about. We're going to have to educate the younger generation. But what we're, what we are about, and you maybe read about it in the papers tied in with the casino because it came to the surface in the newspapers, but it's a little bit premature because we've been at this for two years, working with the Lorain Port Authority. And if I can get the computer to cooperate, we'll get into our presentation. First of all, things exciting are happening in the city of Lorain. The city of Lorain, Lorain Port Authority, Main Street Lorain, Great Lakes Historical Society, Metro Parks, we're going to include Lorain County Transit, and Lorain County Chamber of Commerce, working together on the waterfront development in the city of Lorain. What you've seen for the development along the waterfront is the Black River Landing, Spitzer's Marina, working at the county level, the County Chamber of Commerce with their ballpark and parking areas in the south by the Sixteenth Street boat launch ramps. The famous pellet terminal that just came to the forefront of the news and is causing news ripples all the way across the country. The Dyke disposal site that they're settling to use for. Down at the bottom that appears in purple is one of the latest developments. They're going for a study to extend village and residential living down to Twenty First Street Bridge along the river. And in the, in the news release tied in with the casino, the great thing is the Great Lakes Maritime Museum coming to Lorain. Now, this is going to happen and all these things together are going to be bringing people into Lorain on a long spread out development that runs from Twenty First Street on down to the river on both sides and leaves out a very important section of Lorain. The people along what we call the Broadway Corridor, they have been sort of left out of all this glitz and glamour and as a result are playing catch-up. Some of the people we've talked to feel they're not part of the development, that it's all happening down in the lake. It's a boxy thing that's going to be walled off. We're trying to show that there are ways around that and it takes advantages of the natural resources of our development. What we're proposing is the Lorain Street Railway Incorporated, the Heritage Trolley Line for Lorain, Ohio. In accordance with which, the Lorain Port Authority Resolution 200433 authorized the director to form a nonprofit Heritage Streetcar Line, 501(c)(3) Community Improvement Corporation, and go for the grants and funding necessary to develop the Lorain Heritage Streetcar Line. Our mission statement to date is the Lorain Street Railway Incorporated shall provide a pollution-free, all-weather, pedestrian-friendly heritage streetcar system to integrate the transportation needs of Lorain, Ohio. The Lorain Street Railway shall act as a catalyst to maximize and promote development. What is Lorain's heritage of trolleys? Tom Johnson, the second thing you go with is a steel plant. The first thing was the streetcar line because he knew the importance of moving people around. The Cleveland Southwestern connected to that line and eventually the Lake Shore Electric was formed, which carried transportation between Cleveland, Lorain, Toledo, Detroit, points east and west along Ohio's vacationing people that visited Lake Erie. Next question is what is the Heritage Trolley Line? And for those of you on the, that like to get on the internet, www.heritagetrolley.org is where most of my data is drawn from. There's a wonderful database of people that have spent millions of dollars on studies that have them on the internet. We saved a lot of money and plagiarized and paraphrased a lot of their stuff. But what we're saying is backed by data for running Heritage Trolley Lines. It's an environmentally friendly, pollution-free, all-weather transportation system. We use genuine historic or replica electric railway cars in an urban environment. Cars run on rails, fixed guideways and operate electrically from overhead wire. We're not a museum. It's a very specific transit operation and it is regularly scheduled. Provides an authentic historic trolley experience that mixes urban transportation with visitor entertainment. Market Street Railway in San Francisco keeps buying more cars because they're filling people up, traveling up and down the line, moving people through the corridors. And this is indicative of other lines. Many cases, Heritage Trolley Lines are operated as part of the local transit system. The other cases, local nonprofit, namely us, or a combination of the two, which we're going to talk about. Twenty-one cities have built these. Six of them are going to be competing with us for funds and there's about eight more on the drawing boards because this is catching on. The development of a Heritage Trolley operation is usually driven by economic reasons, often the desire to help rejuvenate a local business economy. Does that sound familiar to anyone? It'd be an excellent way to circulate people between local attractions and parking areas and at the same time, the trolley ride itself becomes part of an experience, further enhancing the attraction. And here I got to holler a little bit because a Heritage Trolley is a development tool. It's not a planning department. We don't want to step on anybody's toes. We are going to present a tool to city, county, development departments to use and we're going to explain how it can be used to them. And the famous question everybody's asking, we are now going to have pedestrian-friendly and transit-oriented development that take preference over auto-oriented development. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre for waterfront property in Lorain and you're going to put an automobile there that's going to block your view of the waterfront. Is it worth it or do we put the parking someplace else? New sites hitherto inaccessible are brought into the development plan. The whole Broadway Corridor, twenty-one blocks we're bringing in. Better traffic control. We're going to have parking at the south end of Lorain. The festivals at the north end of Lorain and our trolley line can move people back and forth in great numbers, controlling the traffic downtown. No more flood of traffic for the festivals. Plenty of room for people to walk and move around. And one of our little secrets that isn't published anyplace in there, once we got you on the, out of your car and on the trolley line, we're not going to let you go till we show you Lorain. You're going to have a place to look, where do you want to eat lunch? Where do you want to do your shopping? Where do you want to move around? People are going to discover halfway downtown, there's a palace theater, things like that from, just from riding the trolley line. It also helps attract additional investment because it is a development corridor that's permanent. You see where the streetcar tracks are, that's where the people are going to go. We're going to take half, half a million eventually, people around in the trolley and show them Lorain. The developers will see that and that's going to be the prime locations for development. It's worked in Tampa, it's worked in Memphis and other places. The trolleys are quiet. There's a buzz, a little bit less than an automobile. They can keep up with traffic. They accelerate the same as an automobile. And you have the benefit of sitting, looking out the window, riding the trolley and seeing where you're going, where you want to stop. You get off, you don't like where you are, you get back on and go. But these Heritage Trolleys are much less expensive to build than a full-fledged light rail system. You have to talk to the engineers about that. Some cities are using the heritage system as a precursor. Charlotte, for example, nineteen ninety-eight, the city council came up with sixteen million dollars to build a Heritage Trolley Line. Last year, they announced the plans to extend this making a full light rail system. And this is how things expand. A little bit of comparison there because people always ask, the difference between light rail and buses. There's some big differences there in a lot of cities. Seventeen to eighteen cents a passenger mile for a bus versus a trolley car. The national average is nine cents for each passenger, each mile. It's cheaper to use a streetcar. In addition, buses last five years, replace them. Trolley cars every fifty years to rebuild them, whether you need them or not. We're talking about rebuilding for the nth time, nineteen thirties, on streetcars. Successful trolley lines have been a collaboration of government, business, and nonprofit organizations. Again, collaboration. This is also what we use to convince the federal people, the county, the city, the locals, every unit we can think of in this county gets behind this thing, they're going to have a hard time turning us down. Nonprofit groups also have volunteers and among all the organizations, we cut our overhead costs. We have people who volunteer to do things that just doesn't cost as much as if you had to go out and broker it. What cities? What are these twenty-one cities? And I put them in order of population because that roughly tells you how much money they spend on them. The big population cities spare no expense. Boy, they can go straight out right to the top shelf and get whatever they want, build an expensive system. Memphis rejuvenated their downtown with their trolley system and they're extending it. New Orleans was always in the business. They never went out of it. And what I want you to notice is there's asterisks there by the different lines for the, for the systems that have formed a nonprofit group. And then Lorain in red by population at sixty-eight thousand, right above it is Kenosha, Wisconsin, which is our traction twin that we would like everybody to see. The funding for these things, up at the top, local funding, we'll be happy to talk about that. State funding, we're going to see our state representatives. Federal funding, the Port Authority has turned in a request for what we're going to call in this program Phase One, Phase Two. So that's the end to Senator Boynavich and Senator DeWine. And we're hoping to get endorsements and backing to help us with that. Now, the nonprofit organization we formed, this is what makes us different from mass transit and railway museum type operations. We set up an endowment fund so we are not coming to people to say, I need a hundred thousand dollars because we're in the red for the year. The endowment fund handles that. How do we get an endowment fund? Developers and local affected organizations. Assessments are made. It's almost like tickets to the policeman's ball. A person that benefits from the trolley line, for example, a store owner buys a thousand dollars worth of tickets and he hands them out to his customers. He gets the benefit, he gets the advertising and they come and ride the trolley and they get the benefit and so forth. We are also able to accept donations and provide tax credits for corporate and other donors. My brother and I are donating two heritage cars we'll talk about and our entire collection that we developed for a museum in Lorain County to the Lorain Street Railway. It's, we, we don't, I don't think we'll be able to utilize the tax credit like the corporation would, but our collection is going to be turned over. It's going to count as part of the matching grant that we're going to go for. Here's a picture worth approximately one million bucks. Tampa, Florida, anybody visit Tampa? Ride the trolley line there. It's a fifty million dollar streetcar line on a six hundred million dollar development corridor and it's going great guns. It's full of people that use it for this development corridor. This is a streetcar sponsored by a local bank, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar replica with the name of the bank on it, with advertising for that bank. In addition, they're crossing the CSX downtown, which is exactly what we're going to do with the North Oak and Southern and the CSX. But our precedent is their, they call the dispatcher, no problem, the trolley goes across. And that's going to be included in our development. Little Rock, Arkansas, for the engineers in the group pioneered what is called the twelve-inch streetcar track in the street design. Prior to this design, many millions of dollars were spent on underground utilities, moving sewer lines, cables, underground cables. Little Rock developed this system, it's twelve inches thick, reinforcing route on six-inch center, steel ties and rail and concrete. This bridges your utilities so you're not doing all that multi-megabuck underground work. It cut the cost of the system by, that's what they're talking about, the tenth of what it would normally cost. You use to build a line and this is what we're talking about, what we're talking about Broadway. Now, Kenosha Electric Railway are twin. Their motto is come ride the lightning, which is the original nineteen-three when they opened their streetcar line. They have, tell me if this looks familiar, a two-mile streetcar loop connects downtown Kenosha, local commuter rail station, new harbor park, housing and shopping, and is situated on Lake Shore. Services provided Monday through Saturday, five refurbished PCC cars. And the whole project, including their maintenance building, was four million dollars. This is Kenosha in the winter on the left. They brush their, their streetcar track off and run all winter. In the summer, it looks like they're running on the grass, which they are. The track is laid flush in the grass. Maintenance is mowing. There's no tracks to collect blowing paper and there's no rocks that just happen to fit in the side of your fist for throwing and it's, it's just mow the grass and the track is maintained. Very important, their cars are ADA equipped. We'll show the benefits of that. And they have these large maintenance transit facilities. The transit facilities also doubles a focal point for their local bus system because it transfers from the bus to the streetcar to ride downtown. That's included in the ticket, just like the old days, penny transfer, except this is a free transfer. This is the start. This would be the first car, this is one we're going to donate. This was the last interurban car to run between Lorain and Cleveland on Lake Shore Electric. Needless to say, it needs a lot of work before it'll run again. That's included in our estimates. That's our heritage car for special occasions, special trips and stuff like that. We have a line on two PCC cars that would be sent out for complete rebuilding to include air conditioning and ADA compliant mechanisms in them. We would encourage on this system that people with disabilities ride the cars and we'll show you how this works a little bit later. In addition, working with the Brookins Museum in Cleveland, we can bum a car. It's part of our bum a car project. There's a lowboy transport available. It's, it's about six thousand dollars and we could bring in a special traction car for a special weekend that'll bring a lot of people into the waterfront to ride that car. Especially how long, I don't think anybody around here ever rode an open car. You don't know how much fun it is to ride a nice hot summer day in a totally open streetcar. What we have labeled for the beginning of the line is Phase One. Runs between the ballpark and parking and with the cooperation of the Lorain County Chamber of Commerce, they had no problem at all making their parking lot design user-friendly for pedestrians using the streetcar line. What this means... What this means is that the streetcar will go right to the parking, be close to it. There'll be a loop to turn around and unload. We'll run down the old CSX track behind the Black River Landing through the festival site down to a loop around the Great Lakes Museum. Now, as they state in the website now, Lorraine, Ohio is Festival City, USA. What we were planning on doing is moving the large numbers of people that visit these festivals, and this is the list for 2005, through the area, especially times of the International Festival where everybody walks, parks a mile away and walks. Now you park in a parking lot, ride the streetcar right down to the festival site and get dropped off. The festival site will also service the museum. The announcement of the museum is what pushed this project over the edge. We're 21 days where we're running full out. The rest of the days, we would not operate because there's no people there. 21 days we're running full out. Partnering with the Maritime Museum and the projections for them now brings us up into almost every weekend operation. There's enough people that they have planned to visit because they know people that like boats, like streetcars. They like history. And between these three groups of people, there's gonna be a lot of visitors to a world-class display. So they have pushed us over, and you notice there's no mention of a casino. That comes later. Because this project does not depend on a casino. The casino enhances it, we'll show that. But this project is now standalone with the museum. And I apologize for the guys that drew the plans. Anybody see the plans that they have for the casino? You sort of erase the casino. And where they have the fountain over in the left-hand corner, you put a nice little loop. Because Mayor Fulton did a very important thing when he bid for the casino. He went to the drawings they had and drew a dashed red line. And everybody said, "What's that?" He said, "That's where the streetcar goes." And he drew that streetcar from the station. You can see the Black River Landing, the big festival area is there. Right to the front door of the Maritime Museum. Then for the initial plans, we'll loop around there and come back. So we have front door access. The artist drew it like this, with the streetcar coming in from the left. Between the parking lots and the door, you'll notice. Now, this is why we encourage people that have a hard time walking or just plain want to enjoy a ride. People that would normally require handicap access. If they're riding our cars, they're dropped off at the front door. It's called privileged access. Something new to the auto crowd, something our parents took for granted. They, our parents, our grandparents, did not walk across big parking lots in wintery, rainy weather. They got off the streetcar, walked to the store. That's what we're reviving here. The first phase is a loop from the 16th Street parking down to the museum. Car barns, two historic cars, two regular cars. The power systems, the overhead wire, $3 million package. This gives us year-round all-weather transportation for the festivities, traffic control for downtown Lorraine, historical enhancement to a visit to the Maritime Museum. The only place in Ohio where you can ride historic trolleys in a normal streetcar operation. An educational opportunity for schoolchildren, every class. What we're looking at is talking to the people in schools to take every class to our, "This was your history, this is your heritage, and this is your transportation facility." Where streetcars ran, why they ran, how they ran. All other cities do this. The museum in Pittsburgh is booked all year with people on these educational things. And the kids love it, they learn a lot from it. Employment opportunities. And here's where we'll be working with Lorraine County Transit. Each service car will have a Lorraine County Transit operator trained to operate a streetcar. This is what they did in Cleveland for the heritage trolley line. They took the regular transit people and the volunteers, and they raised their hand. They had to really sort them out. Train them, especially train people to run the PCC cars. And they will be the people operating the cars. One man per, one, pardon me, one person per car, per shift. If the system grows with the casino that they're talking about round-the-clock service, we could get as many as six cars running on a five-minute headway. Two cars will move 400 people an hour downtown from 400 back. Every hour. Six cars is starting to move 1,200 people back and forth. And you really move people around downtown very professionally. And everybody gets paraded by everybody on Broadway so they get to see it. Full operation would be 50 people, 50 operators, approximately four to six people for maintenance, repair, and then volunteer opportunities. So there's a pretty good employment package that comes with this. Phase Two, and like I said, we're going for Phase One, Phase Two funding. Phase Two is the Broadway corridor. It's a track from the parking lots, south to 21st Street. And there is rumored development in St. Joe's Hospital. We would come around if that pays out. We could come around, service that area, come right down Broadway, down the old streetcar track, by the way, and pass City Hall, down through all the waterfront development areas, and then back again on a big loop. So we're coming downtown. We get out of the way to take, go back to the parking lots. And we're running with six cars or two cars on this continuous loop through downtown. This makes Broadway into a 21-block shopping mall. If you go to Westlake, to the new shopping mall, you got three miles of stores and you drive your car back and forth. Now we'll have 21 blocks. You ride the streetcar, you see something you like, you get off and shop. You get back on and shop the whole area. We want to get the people that are visiting the waterfront, going to the casino, to see downtown Lorraine. We want to get them out of the box, out of the fortress casino concept. Make them part of the community by controlling the traffic, become good neighbors. You have people that, "Where are they gonna park all these people?" The answer, 16th Street and this great big parking lot. The buses, how are we gonna plug up everybody that lives in that area? Are we gonna destroy the waterfront with a big commercial area? No. We're gonna move people logically and quietly and under control. And this is the system we want to use to do it. This is a very dark picture, but this shows Mayor Fulton's dotted lines where he has them going through the trolley stop we come across right through the, between the parking lot and the front door of the museum, right to the front doors of the casinos and the hotels so people, patrons can get on and off right there. Goes to the restaurants and stuff like that. It's what we call transit-oriented development. And it's pretty slick. I talked to the first chief and the head of their development corporation. They normally were looking for a 40-acre site for a casino. They were sold a much smaller site because we're gonna bring people in and out of there. They don't have to spend that extra 16 acres on parking. It's not gonna be isolated by a big parking lot. It's gonna be part of the community, the parking's gonna be off in there. You give me a slag dump that the EPA says you got a cap, I'll put a loop there and make it a parking lot for a streetcar line and put that land into use. It's the kind of things this does. The other important thing in this, it doesn't work if I don't have privileged access. I don't wanna knock Cleveland, but has anybody ridden the waterfront line? You notice where that drops you off? No place. They built it on the wrong side of the parking lot. Instead of where you want to go, you have to walk all the way through a parking lot. What's the hint? Take a car. We're gonna drop you at the front door. The hint is, take the streetcar. It's much, much easier, and it will get you right where you want to go. And we hope we're going to encourage the development of the great new things that are going on in Lorraine. Make it that little bit better, bring more people in, make it something special. And our second step that we're going for, the Broadway Loop, is another $3 million. So the package we're gonna be going for is a total of $6 million. And it will handle the beginning phases and get us into operation and start to move people around the city of Lorraine. And again, that is our loop down Broadway, down through the pellet terminal, around the museum, back up through the CSX track and into the parking lot, serving the village. You see the railroad track in light blue coming left to right. When RTA catches on and electrifies commuter rail, they'll be able to come right into Lorraine, come down our line to the station, and vice versa to the cars. The systems are interchangeable, and they'll be able to service Lorraine very well, both in commuter and weekend service. This is what we looked like on Broadway when we were in the 1995 parade in Lorraine. Give you some idea of what the Lake Shore used to look like. And we hope to continue this. And that's our presentation for today. And the Lorraine Street Railway Revisited, and this is what we call the beginning. And we thank you very much for your indulgence on this. And what we'd like to ask the commissioners, if you could consider it later date, that if on yourself I distributed an executive summary of our program. And we would like you to possibly endorse the system. And this would include relations with our friends at the WACA and Ohio Department of Transportation when the time comes to put an actual fixed guideway flange rail overhead streetcar system in to Lorraine because we figure it is just gonna be the icing on the cake to turn the development into something very special. And I thank you for your time again. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Dennis. That sounds very exciting. As you know, Commissioner Kayla and I sit on the WACA. And Commissioner Kokoski is Ted's alternate when he's not able to attend. You said the port was handling the application for funding?
Yes.
And we work closely with Rick Novak?
Yes.
So I'm sure that we wish to be in the loop for what's going on.
We would like to invite you to have a technical advisor on our board. Our board is composed of people from the city, people from the port. The developers are gonna be on on this so that they know what is expected and they know it's no surprise when it comes up. Different people from around town are gonna be on the board. Mr. Dwayne is gonna be on the board, myself, my brother. And it will be a very local operation. And we hope to get everybody involved because it is truly county-wide.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
All right, this is Dennis, as a major stakeholder personally on Broadway, I'd like to see how that plan is running down the streets. So I'd be very involved in just what your plans are.
I think he's offering his store for parking.
There you go. We will have stops available. We have a price for the stop at 100 days. Okay, thanks, Dennis.
Anything, please. At this point, we are at the public comment portion of our board meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to offer a comment today? This is your, Bonnie, come on. Please come to the microphone.
This is Bonnie Kutcher of 4H. Oh, we are.
She's Bonnie Kutcher for 4H.
Maybe they're large.
Hi, Bonnie Kutcher from Oberlin, Ohio. Many people remember me from Kutcher's Brownhelm store. We were there for 30 years. And so I know some of you people from there and some of you people from Extension. Mr. Twining is on the board. I'm vice president of Lorraine County Extension Advisory. And I'm representing 4H today because this is Ohio 4H Week. And if you had the Lorraine Journal on Sunday, we featured in that. And in the Chronicle, they had another article about how many Taylor is getting 4H into our urban areas, which we're very glad because it's not just animals that we do or food. We have like over 200 projects. And we're very excited about the things that we do in 4H. I know one of our commissioners was a former 4H'er out there in Brownhelm. And so we learned that when we had a meeting with them. We want to thank the Extension for all of your help with all of the area that you do, not just with 4H, but the other areas that you do. 4H was started by A.B. Graham in 1902. And in 1919, Henry Leinbach, a man who lived in Brownhelm, was asked by A.B. Graham if he would like to get involved in 4H. And we're trying to find out if we're the oldest continuous club in the state. So Eva Weber is working on that now because our club has been in existence since 1919. I have a couple other leaders that are here with me. And I'll turn it over to Jenny Westover, who is our head 4H advisor. We also baked cookies the other night, so we'll put them on the table back here with your coffee.
You baked cookies? You didn't buy them at the store? Thank you, Bonnie.
Yes.
Good morning, I'm Jennifer Westover. I'm from Vermillion, Ohio. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the community service projects the 4H Club does. They do bike trail litter pickup in the spring and fall, community roadside litter pickups. And the children participate in Easter Seals Balloon Days, collecting change at local businesses from people as they come out to donate to Easter Seals. And they do many different activities with nursing homes. They have petting zoos at different functions. And they promote 4H at school through their posters and presentations. Camps are provided for members and other children at Kelly's Island. And Cloverbud Camp takes place at one of the metro parks. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Jenny.
Good morning, also, I'm Mary Richardson, one of the advisors with Jenny and Bonnie at Brownhelm. My daughter sent a scrapbook for you guys, all of you commissioners, I should say, to enjoy and look at, at some of the things that she's been in 4H for four years now. And I think it's a good learning experience for all the kids in Lorraine County. If you've got children, grandchildren, give them the opportunity, give them the idea for 4H. They have a lot of fun. My daughter and her four friends were the ones that baked the cookies the other night. And they're wanting to bake cookies again for everybody, so enjoy it, please.
They can bake cookies for us anytime.
Yeah, they say everybody enjoy them, they, save them the crumbs if you would.
Thank you very much. Rural Urban had an article on their front page this week giving information about where to call in case you were interested. But I left a note at home. What is the number if anybody wants to call to find out about a 4H group in their particular area? Do you know?
Yes, 326-58-
326-58-
51.
51. Do you have that? 326-58-51, if you could put it on the screen. Call for information about 4H groups in your area for your child ages kindergarten through-
Kindergarten through 19.
19, okay. Thank you so much for coming this morning, ladies. It's a wonderful program. I didn't get to be a 4H'er like Lori, but my daughters were and my sons.
Best days of my life.
All right.
Except for being commissioner, of course.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to talk to us this morning? Okay, Shirley, we're doing okay this morning?
I'm having any profundities today.
You're not having any fun today?
I'm having profundities.
Oh.
It's a new word.
Okay, well, I'll go look it up. I know how to spell it. I'm moving going to executive session for the purposes outlined by the administrator and our assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kokoski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Thank you for your attendance this morning.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I'm in cookies shaped like the state of Ohio. And so that was really a nice, it was a lot of fun. It was a fun time.
I saw my first one in Tuscaloosa, number 11. That was in October of 1998. And from there, I just, I couldn't believe how neat they all were.
I said, "How do I get addresses for these?" And she said, "Oh, we can send you all that." So she sent me up to dates, the 67 that had been painted.
We took off and we started doing it. And as more that we did, the more we enjoyed it. We got to see different places of the state that we probably would have never have gone before, ride roads that we would have definitely never been on before. And as we started seeing more and more barns, it became interesting to see the different paintings. Although the emblem and the symbol is the same, it's always got a little bit of flair to it, a little variety. And it was really a good time for us.
We tried to do seven barns in a day. And we would sit down the night before and plan our trip. And I had a list of everything. We go this road, this road, right, left. And so it took all the work out of it when we went to photograph the barn. We always went to the door, asked for permission if it was all right if we photographed. A lot of times we didn't find people at home, but a lot of times we did. And that was the most wonderful experience, talking to those people. And they sent us home with wonderful stories, a lot of laughs. And one barn, one couple even sent us home with a basket full of produce out of our garden.
The one in Muskegon, it was way, way back in. And when we pulled up there, the men and lady were in their golf carts. They were going, I guess, back to the barn. And they were so nice. They stood there and they got out of the car.
The five-year history of the project to sit and watch Scott paint a barn, take photos of Scott painting a barn.
They're all, all of them are different.
Heck, that's an hour and a half away or two hours or so in a Wood County barn after we watched it. There's a scavenger hunt quality to it. after we watched up, there's a scavenger hunt quality to it.
Well, it's definitely a thrill, because sometimes you're looking for a while.